Mission of the Exeter West Greenwich Regional School District is to empower students to contribute to school and community by providing substantial learning experiences in safe, trusting, and motivating environment.
Thank you. Okay, we have a whole big forum. If there's anybody in the audience that would like to speak to the committee on something that is not on the agenda, may do so now. Hold on a sec. Okay. Okay, we'd like to welcome the new school committee members. We have Paul McGarrett from Heisman, and Amy Gardner from... Would you like to introduce yourself?
Sure.
We can actually go on the whole committee if you don't mind me about some of my... If you'd like to start.
Okay. My name is Amy Gardner, and I'm from Exeter. I'm not a mom.
Two?
I'm a resident district.
Paul?
So, I'm from Exeter, obviously. I've lived in district almost thirty years, and I've lived in Rhode Island my entire life. That's a long number of years, fifty-nine years. Embarrassed, I would have to admit to that. This is my third term on the school committee.
Diane?
Diane Allen.
This is my first term on the school committee as well. I'm from Exeter. All my school kids went to school here. I'm proud of you all.
Thank you.
Cheryl Green from West Greenwich, and I'm serving my first term currently, and I have two children.
Thank you. Karen?
I'm Terry Donovan, and I'm a resident of Exeter. I'm in the middle of my second term on the school committee. We have three children. One is graduate of AWG, and two are juniors.
Lee?
I'm Lee Kissinger. I'm in the middle of my second term on the school committee. My two kids have graduated from West Greenwich, and looking forward to representing the school and the town for the next two years anyway, four years after me. Yeah, because I'm starting this after. I'm starting my second term. Well, I was appointed, elected, so in my mind, I'm kind of mixed up.
He knows he has to come here on the break, please.
I'm Bonnie P. M. A. I'm from West Greenwich. I am entering my seventh year on the school committee. I've been about the school district since my son was in kindergarten, so that was thirteen years ago. I started volunteering in classrooms, and I was on the Parent Teacher Association for many years. My son's in twelfth grade, and my daughter is in tenth grade. Welcome everybody to our organizational meeting for 2017 school year.
Okay. Let's see. Do you want to say anything?
No, just to extend our welcome as well. I know I had an opportunity to work with Walter past, and I met with Amy last week, so looking forward to another couple of years together.
Okay. Now, we have our school committee organizational meeting, five-day organization with much of the chair, the vice chair, and the vice deputy. We have the nomination. Is that the chair?
I'd like to make the nomination for Bonnie and Andy, who remain as the chair of the school committee.
Seven.
Motion, a second. All in favor?
Uh, discussion.
No discussion.
No discussion? I can hear.
I apologize.
Oh, so this is where discussion follows?
Absolutely.
So, I am going on nine years, did I say that properly? Years, years with the school committee. My first chairman was Liam Clay from West Greenwich. The follow-on to him is another individual from Exeter. Subsequent to that, we had successive members from West Greenwich. When I came out to committee, they always thought that there should be some kind of, like, hey, this time, the committee had somebody from Exeter, the next time, we're going to have somebody from West Greenwich. We seem to have walked away from that unwritten rule, and the concern's been, because these discussions are not two parties. They sometimes are, you know, have the interests of the towns first, and those types of discussions tend to fall along with individuals that represent that particular town. So, what I am seeing over the course of the next few years is again, another chairman from West Greenwich. The chair and the association.
Do we have any comments? Okay, so we have a motion. We have a second. All in favor of Bonnie and Andy as chair?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All abstaining? Motion carries. Okay, now we have the vice chair. Do you all want to vote for a vice chair?
I nominate Lee Kissinger as vice chair of the school committee. Second.
Discussion. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion carries.
And then we have the court.
I'll make the motion to nominate Terry Donovan for the position of school committee.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion carries.
And then we have the court.
I'll make the motion to nominate Terry Donovan for the position of school committee.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion carries.
And then we have the court.
I'll make the motion to nominate Terry Donovan for the position of school committee.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Motion carries.
And then we have the court.
I'll make the motion to nominate Terry Donovan for the position of school committee.
A second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Here it is. And then we have the Rhode Island Association School Committee Delegate.
I'll make the motion, I'll make a motion for Bonnie to be the vice chair.
Second. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Here it is. Okay, if you all go to member assignments, through your school committee packet. School committee organization, December 2016 to November 2018. There is the Exeter Council Liaison. I'd like to reiterate that. Okay. So Diane Allen will be the Exeter Council Liaison. The West Greenwich Council Liaison.
I'll make the motion.
Lee Kissinger will be the West Greenwich Council Liaison. Food Service Liaison.
Okay.
Thanks, Terry. Terry Donovan. The Policy Subcommittee. Mr. Clay and Jim are on that committee, I've been on that committee for the last seven years, so I'd like to be on that committee. We're almost done with our group work, we're writing our policy as well. I'll be on that committee. We got the Health and Wellness, School Wellness.
I can leave it up.
Thanks, Cheryl. Okay, so the Building Committee. We need one from each town, so one from West Greenwich.
All remain. I've been to it for the last few years.
Yep. Good job. Thank you. Do we have somebody from Exeter that would be willing to be on the Building Committee?
Okay.
Thanks, Amy. The District Emergency Response Planning Team. I don't mind staying with that. And then the Local Advisory Committee. We have local advisory about that. Amy?
Thank you.
Rob, do you want to get up? Okay. There's another section in your packet for other positions that the chair appoints for, but they don't leave that off, so we'll go into this whole law process, and then if they need to, it's amazing to reform, at that time, we'll see, we'll see what we can do to those committees. Okay?
I'm going to make a motion to move for, see legal advice related to school committee responsibilities to just after unfinished business on the agenda.
There's a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Because motion carries. Okay, now we have affirmation, reaffirmation of Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical Standards about General Law sixteen dash two dash nine point one. That was our basic packet. We all had a chance to jump, if we all agree for it or not. Just so that has title sixteen on the top. Cheryl, you got it?
I do. It's just...
You got it. I'll show you. I'm not going to read it.
Oh, okay.
Oh, you should write it down.
I know that.
We have to follow these.
You have to read to a file, you don't have to read it yourself. So, we're on General Law, the school committee shall adopt following code of... We don't have that motion. So, motion's on.
I'll make a motion to affirm, reaffirm the acceptance of the Code of Basic Management Principles and Ethical Standards.
Second.
Discussion.
Oh, yeah, what are we doing? Are we acknowledging by voting aye or nay that? No, I thought it was fourteen oh one. Are we voting on fourteen oh one?
No, we're not. That was part of the General Law, Chapter sixteen, dash two, dash nine point one. It requires that school committee shall adopt the following code of basic management principles and ethical standards. Our organizational meetings, this coming forward, take that.
Why do we have a motion for that? Because the statute states that the school committee shall adopt. So, a lot of committees do around the state, this is a good organization, because these are guidelines, actually, we're going to talk about, and show why. Me and Eric, who's around General Assembly, expects the school committee to report itself. So, the statute says, school committee shall adopt the following code of basic management principles. School committees adopt those in the organization. Just to say that, I'm not about to parse this, but in the law itself, does it say that we have to, because we all have to take an oath, one to uphold the United States Constitution, and all the Rhode Island general laws, of which this is one of them. So, how is it that, that oath, to uphold what I just spoke about, and this is any different? I think my oath would be insufficient, don't you think? No, because, as I said before, the General Assembly, which is your voice, says that the school committee shall adopt the following code of basic management principles. If they intended to include in the role of office, they would have changed their role to office, but they haven't, so they indicate how we should act, what we should do. As I said, they are your voice, so they're telling you what to do, and shall, it's mandatory. It's our bond. Where are you reading? A, school committees shall adopt the following code of basic management principles and ethical standards. So, the General Assembly has... Is this the Rhode Island general law versus this one? It goes anywhere you want, but my legal advice to you is that the General Assembly expects you to adopt these, and my experience tells you that school committees do this in the organizational meetings across the state. This is not different than anywhere else. This is existing law that we have, that we have done this in the past.
Yes.
Okay.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. Now, we have our policy fourteen oh one, school committee public interaction. This is members' understanding of the commitment to proper decorum as per section four of policy fourteen oh one. This is an existing policy, so at our organizational meetings, we ask each member to state your understanding and commitment to that section four of the policy fourteen oh one. There's no, there's no motion, we go around the room, each member states their commitment and their understanding of that section of the policy. I'm assuming that we read it. Very good. Okay. So, all of us, I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy fourteen oh one. Lee?
I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy fourteen oh one.
Chair?
I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy one four zero one.
Okay. I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy fourteen oh one. Diane?
I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy fourteen oh one.
Paul?
Yeah, I'm good with that, too.
Amy?
I understand and commit to proper decorum as per policy one four zero one.
Robin, you can add to that to the record for everybody. Okay. Okay, we have to do a second format, Jill?
So, a couple of minor adjustments, we did talk a little bit about it the last time we were together. We have always had one business meeting and one educational meeting scheduled each month, but the topics that have been included in those meetings have really been blended, and because there was a vote to move to legal representation one time per month, we're really going to strategically separate the two. So, we'll have an educational meeting, that's when, for example, schools will do their annual presentations, and we'll have other informative items on the agenda, and the business meeting will stick to the policy adoption and a lot of the things that require votes. So, that's one thing that we've talked about, how that will be separated going forward in the months when we have two meetings. And the other thing, we are always trying to make sure that the agenda is as clear as possible, and we want to make sure that minutes are kept the best that we can keep them, and in a nice way. So, one of the things that we found in some other districts is that they're including in the detail of the minutes, so the detail that we get, a sample of the motion, and that way, unless there's a vote to change the motion, there always can be, but that way, we have something to work off of, and if the motion doesn't change, it's as simple as reading the motion, the recommended motion, and then Robin will just report the vote. So, that way, we're not spending a lot of time trying to figure out the wording of the motion should be. Now, this is a recommended motion, certainly, if there's something that needs to be adjusted, I could report the adjustment and then do the second vote, but it's, I think, a good way to keep us focused. I know we spent some time at various meetings trying to think of the wording of motions, so we're trying to do some of that in advance to help, and then this should help Robin stay really on top of things in terms of the wording of the motions as well. So, those are the major changes, and that's why you can see in this particular section of the detail, everything that's red is the, are the items that require action, and theirs, for the most part, recommended motion is there for, of course, the following.
Okay. Okay, we have two items. We have the consent agenda.
Consent agenda includes our regular meeting minutes from November twenty-second. We also have some appointments, and I'll give some detail on these. The first appointment is connected to a job share request that is also included in the consent agenda. The job share request is from one of our teachers who is returning from maternity leave. This individual is the person who's been her son since the start of her school year. She's done, she's done an amazing job, and Sharon would like to return three days a week, so she can spend some extra days at one hundred and one, so where, because Sharon is actually now requesting two days off without pay, then this individual will be affiliated on staff and level to the two days she has been with her son since the start of her school year. So, that is at MetCap, and that is connected to the job share proposal, I can see it later in the consent agenda. We also have some athletic appointments, these are positions that were vacated through individuals who decided not to return. One is the JV girls' basketball coach at the senior high school. Erin is someone who coaches with us in soccer, she's been a coach for our district already. John Filoni is recommended for the head wrestling coach position at a senior high school, and we also have a club advisor, Alex Follman. Alex is a Gilmore student, graduated a couple of years back, was involved in the aquatic club when he was here, and is currently in college studying engineering, and has been connected to the aquatic club even since he graduated from school. In terms of resignations, we have a coaching resignation, cheerleading, that individual is, is not in our district this year, and so her commitment to that position is in question for her. We have additional retirement for the end of this school year from MetCap, and I already talked about the job share proposal from our teacher at MetCap. Also, in the consent agenda are our monthly bills, and we do have some returning families who have submitted their paperwork for school approvals, and I have this through, so that covers it.
Amy, do we need to pull the minutes on November twenty-second? Do you have the law? I need to see how, so we pull the minutes.
Make a motion to pull the minutes on November twenty-second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations.
So, let me just, I have a couple of introductions, because the audience is our new wrestling coach, John.
That would be me. Hello. Thank you for having me, I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, welcome.
And believe my rule is I'm going to leave and go coaching right now, so have a good evening.
And Alex also came, Alex Follman. Alex, welcome. Welcome back. Yeah, I'm Harry Long. I know he's really excited about working with us.
Well, thanks for coming back.
Yeah, I was already glad.
It's always great to go back to your community and be back to them.
Well, never did we left.
And Alicia is also here. Alicia Stantz is, when she spent, our teacher, filling in for Sharon since the start of her school year, and so after the holiday break, she'll be on our official list of teachers and on staff at level for the two days a week, every day of her school year with Sharon, so we're really excited about it.
Thank you very much. I've been a wonderful experience, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Did I miss anybody?
Okay, we have four spots. We have the Policy Subcommittee meeting minutes on November twenty-eighth, we have the discipline reports, the Exeter West Greenwich Committee Bylaws, and we have the communication to parents for Mark and Ellen, the Refugee Outreach International Project. Do you have any questions, like, you want to comment? Okay. Two thousand sixteen seventeen budget correction.
For the, just a point worth note, we did receive word from the auditor today, if you look on the backside of the document, that has a projection, June thirty of two thousand sixteen, unaudited, unassigned, general fund balance, it's actually about nine hundred and thirty thousand dollars, so that's how we want to view. I have a question.
I would call this a foul.
So, I think it's relevant. On the reserve fund balance, what permits us to withdraw from the reserve fund balance? It used to be direction under either the Bylaws or the school committee laws, whatever it is, I think it was seventy-nine, the public law, whatever it was, that gave the criteria as to what allowed us to make withdrawal from the reserve. So, as an example, the roof burned down, you've got to take emergency action. Where is that?
We have a policy, but I don't have a policy manual, I could look it up with the exact number that defines that.
Because I looked through the policy, unfortunately. So, I think you're referencing the management of the fund balance, and there's the operation fund balance, which if you look at the projection for, the projection number for two thousand sixteen seventeen, that's showing what we might have at the end of this year.
So that's one thing that we've talked about how that will be separated going forward in the months when we have two meetings. And the other thing, we are always trying to make sure that the agenda is as clear as possible. We want to make sure that minutes are kept the best that we can keep them and in a nice way. So one of the things that we found in some other districts is that they're including in the detail of the minutes, so the detail that we get, a sample of the motion. And that way, unless there is a vote to change the motion, there always can be. But that way, we have something to work off of. And if the motion doesn't change, it's as simple as reading the motion, the recommended motion, and then Robyn will just report the vote. So that way, we're not spending a lot of time trying to figure out what the wording of the motion should be. Now, this is a recommended motion. Certainly, if there's something that needs to be adjusted, I could report the adjustment and then do the second vote. But it's, I think, a good way to kind of keep us focused. I know we spent some time at various meetings trying to think of the wording of motions. So we're trying to do some of that in advance to help. And then this should help Robyn stay on top of things in terms of the wording of the motions as well. So those are the major changes. And that's why you see in this particular section of the detail, everything that's red is the items that require action. And there's, for the most part, recommended motions there for first of all. Okay?
Okay, we have two items. We have the consent agenda.
Consent agenda includes our regular meeting minutes from November 22nd. We also have some appointments. I'll give some detail on these. First appointment is connected to a job share request that is also included in the consent agenda. The job share request is from one of our teachers who is returning from maternity leave. This individual is the person who's been her son since the start of her school year. She's done an amazing job. And Sharon would like to return three days a week so she can spend some extra days at 101. So where, because Sharon is actually now requesting two days' leave without pay, then this individual will be appointed on staff at level to the two days she has been with her son since the start of the school year. So that is at Metcalfe, and that is connected to the job share proposal. I can see it later in the consent agenda. We also have some athletic appointments. These are positions that were vacated through individuals who decided not to return. One is the JV girls' basketball coach at the senior high school. Erin is someone who coaches with us for soccer. She's been a coach for our district already. John Faloni is recommended for the head wrestling coach position at a senior high school. And we also have a club advisor, Alex Follman. Alex is a Gilmore student, graduated a couple of years back, was involved in the aquatic club when he was here, and is currently in college studying engineering and has been connected to the aquatic club even since he graduated from school. In terms of resignations, we have a coaching resignation, cheerleading. That individual is not in our district this year. And so the commitment to that position is impossible for her. We have additional retirement for the end of this school year from Metcalfe. I already talked about the job share proposal from our teacher at Metcalfe. Also in the consent agenda are our monthly bills. And we do have some returning families who have submitted their paperwork for school approvals. And I have this through. So that covers it.
I need to pull the minutes on November 22nd. Do you have the laws? I need to see how. So we pull the minutes.
Make a motion to pull the minutes on November 22nd.
22nd. All's in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda, less the minutes of November 22nd.
22nd. All's in favor? Aye. Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we'll hold the minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of November 22nd.
22nd. Any others in favor?
Aye.
Opposed or abstentions? Motion carries. Congratulations.
So let me just, I have a couple of introductions. The audience is our new wrestling coach, John.
That would be me. Hello. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it very much.
Thank you. Welcome.
And believe my rule is I'm going to leave and go coaching right now. So have a good evening.
Thank you. And Alex also came. Alex Follman. Alex, welcome. Welcome back. Yeah, Ian Harrowell. I know he's really excited about working with us.
Well, thank you for coming back.
Yeah, I was already around.
It's always great to come back to your community and be back to them.
Well, never did we left.
And Alicia is also here. Alicia Stantz is, when she spent, our teacher filling in for Sharon since the start of her school year. And so after the holiday break, she'll be on our official list of teachers and on staff at level for the two days a week, every major of the school year for Sharon. So we're really excited about it.
Thank you very much. I've been a wonderful experience. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Did I miss anybody?
Okay, we have four spots. We have the House of Subcommittee meeting minutes of November 28th. We have the discipline reports. The executive management bylaws. And we have the communication to parents for marking the refugee outreach international project. Do you have any questions that you want to discuss? Right. 2016, 2017 budget correction.
For the, just a point worth noting, we did receive word from the auditor today. If you look on the backside of the document, that has a projection, June 30, 2016, unaudit and unassigned general fund balance. It's actually about $930,000. So that's how we want to view.
I have a question.
I will answer that.
So I think it's relevant. On the reserve fund balance, what permits us to withdraw from the reserve fund balance? It used to be direction under either the bylaws or the school committee laws, whatever it is, I think it was 79, the public law, whatever it was, that gave the criteria as to what allowed us to make withdrawal from the reserve. So as an example, the roof burned down. You've got to take emergency action. Where is that?
We have a policy, but I don't have a policy manual with me. I could look it up with the exact number that defines that.
Because I looked through the policy, unfortunately.
So I think you're referencing the management of the fund balance. And there's the operation fund balance, which if you look at the projection for, the projection number for 2016-17, that's showing what we might have at the end of this year. The June 30, 2016, unassigned general fund balances, I just reported, is actually going to come in a little higher than that, maybe around $930,000.
Sure. If I recall, I guess I thought I did what? The bylaws, private public laws, we go under, it's a, it's a reference. Even on our policy, I mean, could not find the paragraph that said what permitted us to withdraw. In other words, it used to be something unforeseen, some emergency, something catastrophic. I couldn't find it. I assume it's still there. It's still there.
We have a policy.
Sorry?
We do have a policy.
Oh, yeah. I'll look at it. I couldn't find this.
You have a question for that? Yes, 2017.
So from a building perspective, department chairs, principals, directors, they've gotten their information pretty much uploaded. We need to work with the central office to gather information. But we're on the target for all of the different timelines I was.
And I just, I think it's important to know, I know this has been said, this is going to be a challenging year for us as we went through the budget process, based on a number of variables. And I just wanted to say them again so that people are not surprised. The preliminary figures from the Department of Ed indicate another $290,000 reduction in statewide, based on the seventh year of the funding formula. We have, we're anticipating three new classrooms based on projected enrollments, and that is kindergarten, grade three, and grade four. We currently have overages in a couple of those grade levels now. And even last year in kindergarten, we increased the class size through contract negotiations. And we are already over in one class with two new kids arriving right after the break. That's the phone call I got today. So all of our six classrooms are now filled. We added a new second grade classroom last year after we had 14 new students enter in grade two in the last three weeks of the summer. Those children are moving to grade three. We need to put a classroom there. And we currently have in grade four only four classrooms. However, as the school year has progressed, we've had more kids come in in grade four. We are now over in grade four. And the grade level that's moving from three to four is full and also requires the addition of that classroom in grade four as well. So we have increased elementary enrollment that there's nothing that we can do based on contract language and class size that we need to budget for. In addition, there's a lot of conversation about the cost of health care. That is a national issue. We are experiencing the impact of the national conversation, but also the local usage. So the claims that we have versus what we're paying are averaging about $75,000 more per month than what we're paying in. And the increase that we're expected to see is in the upper digits, and it will be significant. So what am I missing? And then we have contractual obligations as well around increases. We've certainly had other conversations about things that we want to include in the budget. We need to eventually make a decision, like, for example, the unfunded sports. So now, on the positive side, we have a number of retirements that have already been approved. I don't know if there are more that will happen for, of course, the rest of the school year, but that will result in some savings, not enough to cover all the things that we're seeing as increases. So just throwing all of that out there, this is not going to be as easy a conversation as we have had over the last several years in our district. Did I miss anything?
Everything's going on in place. This one will be out of the door very shortly. So it's going to be challenging for sure.
Any questions? The subcommittee reports.
So for the new and returning members, we've been doing this report via spreadsheet for the past number of years. Every time there's a policy that requires us to review and changes, we add it to this spreadsheet. And then when it goes to policy subcommittee, it's recorded in the review column. And then when it goes to school committee, we record that date in the last column. All of the policies that are highlighted in gray are the ones that, over the past several years, have been brought through the process, brought to school committee, have been adopted or amended. The ones that have no highlight at all are the ones that remain on our list as things that we're, that we need to look at. And if there are some necessary changes, they will go through that process as well. And then the green ones, the ones that are highlighted in green, are the ones that we've talked about through the policy subcommittee, but we have not brought any changes yet to the school committee because the, which is not finished with that conversation. And the ones that are in yellow are the ones that are on the next, which for us is tonight, the school committee agenda. So there are two on this, on this report that are highlighted in yellow, and those are the two policies that you'll see in new and unfinished business later.
Thank you. Any questions? New business, we have the senior high outdoor adventure club, Mr. Lorzki.
So in the packet, there is some information, the original request from Mr. Mastriani at our high school, one of our high school teachers. And this is a club request, but it is also an overnight field trip request, which requires the proposal to be brought to school committee. Tom has provided some additional information, including the itinerary and so forth. That was included in the packet. And he is here this evening to talk about the trip. And turn the floor over to you.
Thank you. So this is the second year that I've run this ski trip. This year to save costs in a district as small as ours. We are going to have parent chaperones also drive. So we have, one, a change needs to be made to your packet. So Kelly and Michael Delacruz will no longer be chaperoning. But we have myself, Barbara Wilmot, who will not be driving students. Cliff Carlson, Jeff Legasi, who is in the back, and Brian Lizinski and Bill Zercher will be the parents who are driving and chaperoning. They either all have or will have before we go the BCI checks and volunteer forms in. I asked Mr. Ross to check to make sure that we would be covered under the insurance waiver, and the parents will be covered by the school's insurance waiver. And again, we're doing this to save about $300 per student over taking a bus. We're going to go up on Mount Luther King weekend, leave after school on Friday, come back Monday afternoon, and the kids should be in school on Tuesday. Unless it's like last year when it snows on the way home and we didn't have school the next day.
I remember that now. Tom, how long does chaperoning will be driving kids?
So Bill Zercher will be driving four students, no, three students. Jeff will be driving four, including their own kids. Brian Lizinski will be driving three students, and Cliff Carlson will be also driving three students. And then Barbara and I will go up in a separate car without driving students.
And our insurance level of that is parents' right?
Yeah. So I reached out to the trust. There are two insurance things going on there. One is the, we purchased a student rider for transportation with non-bus vehicles. So we think of the cheerleading team and the gymnastics team, well, they got today meets because it's such a small group of bus. So we purchased that rider. That applies to the, you know, there'd be some coverage there. And then I reached out to the trust, and their brief was, we do not have an issue with this request as per the liability policy. Obviously, the coverage is based on the policy terms, conditions, exclusion of the policy. However, we recommend that you check with your attorney and possibly make a formal recommendation, and that's a formal recommendation to the school committee to say, you're going against your own policy, which says you'll transport the bus. That's what this is all about.
So I'm asking to our policy to say that there's plus transportation here?
So I'm just going to be honest, because there's a little bit of a technicality that I want to say that was pointed out to me. Our policy is specific to field trips, so school-related field trips and athletics. We, at the time that that policy was written, we did not consider, we don't typically have field trip requests for an extracurricular club. And when we did have those requests, they typically were covered by ridership on a bus. But I'm just saying that the way the policy is written, you can make a case that it actually doesn't speak to club field trips. Which means we either, I mean, obviously, the committee is the group that will work on the approval of the trip. But regardless if it's something that we need to look at through the policy subcommittee so that we can clean that language up, we can certainly add it to that list as well. Correct?
Yeah.
I have another question about safety. Are students required to wear ski helmets?
I require them to wear helmets, but that does not mean that I can, you know, it's like your own kids, you can't guarantee once they leave that they're going to be wearing helmets, but I do tell them they have to wear helmets. They all have the school time insurance. They have, so if you look at the permission slip, the parents have specifically stated whose vehicle they could ride in. We just had a meeting tonight, and they're all actually putting down all the parent's name in case there's an emergency that we need, you know, something wrong with somebody's car breaks down, they need to change cars. So they, they will have signed by their parents that they could ride specifically with each individual chaperone that is going to be on the trip as well.
I think, you know, at the end of it, that's all, you know, you would be in violation of your own policy, so we suggest making a one-time special request to the school committee to accommodate the job. That's really the nexus of the issues is that there's acknowledgement that what's going to be happening here is, is not what our policy states. We're aware of that. The, as Mr. Mastriani just said, it's student insurance, there's district liability insurance, there's the travel with parents, ridership insurance. So that's really gone.
So do we have to make a motion to make an exception to the policy? And in this case, because it's a club and it's not a particular entity, the policy that way, and then revisit the policy, some type of crazy motion? I think we're going to make a motion probably to approve the trip with parent chaperones driving the children. I can imagine that pretty much states whether to be four or given. Any questions? Make a motion to the senior high outdoor adventure club with a ride trip with a parent chaperone driving children. Do we have a second?
Second for discussion.
Yep. Okay, discussion.
I did not see on the permission slip, the information about who they can be riding.
So that is, if you look, so there's, so that, we, it says that who they can ride with, so the parents, circle rider, they just got all of their parents' names and then sign it.
Is there any chance that students would be driving themselves?
No.
So that's predicted?
Yeah, it's all parents, right. Four parents.
And how much would it add to the cost of the trip to have?
A bus would be $4,800 divided by 15 students.
Okay, because of the number of days?
Well, it's not the number of days, it's the distance. And we have a small, so travel agents require 40 people to complete the bus in their packages. We probably will never have 40 students on a school trip. Last year, we went for two days, and it was almost $100 more per student. So this is a three-day ski trip, significantly less than last year's trip.
Any other Rhode Island districts doing a similar thing that everybody else?
I'm not aware of that.
Any further questions? I'm just going to throw this out there. What if, what if this is a non-sanctioned? The policy and teachers' tickets, all these are sanctioned trips.
Yeah, so the trips that you're talking about would be trips that are run by individual faculty members, staff members, whomever, but they're not operating through a particular club or through a particular department or, you know, it's just, it's just something that they're doing extra. This is actually a sanctioned club, outdoor adventure club. And the description of the outdoor adventure club talks about things like rock climbing and skiing and so on and so forth. So a skate trip has always been a sanctioned trip. It's always been a sanctioned activity. The position itself is listed in the contract. So I don't see us getting around that.
Mr. Robyn, if I could tell, there's some tension up here. I'm trying to make sure the phrase covered.
I mean, this is, this is no different than how in Boy Scouts, you know, it's the parents drive the kids, the parents, the certain parents are issued to drive and stuff like that. It's different because of the policy situation here a little bit, but.
There is a little bit of difference that we're responsible for $30,000 budget in Boy Scouts, $30,000 budget.
So, to reiterate what you were saying, for basically the insurance company, is that a reply to you that gave the recommendation of just asking for an approval by the school committee, is that what you were reading from? So if that's from our insurance and that's the recommendation, so if that's what it is, basically, that sounds like that's covering there.
Tom, how much did you say the possible rate?
$4,800.
Oh, yeah, $4,800 versus government, maximum.
Does that have to be put right in that exchange of insurance, something else? We're going to.
I'm just going to talk to you against that.
So we have the, the written response from the insurance company, and then putting it on as a school for the agenda item, and the vote recorded in the minutes becomes the backup that will follow the recommendation of the rule. So they, what they're saying is, we, we have a policy, there's some conversation about whether this particular group is covered. whether this particular group is covered or not, the other policy, which we need to address, but let's just say that the intent of the policy was that all groups would require bus transportation, because I believe that is the intent of the policy. We can't knowingly violate school committee policy, but the school committee certainly has the right to vote for individual waivers based on circumstance, and that's part of what this conversation is. Again, if you vote on it, then it's a, it's a one-time vote, any other request also has to come forward, which, by the way, you'll see one in about fifteen seconds. And then the policy is still in place, so that we will always have the control of approving on an individual basis if there's somebody that's looking to plan outside of this whole of the written policy, whether it have to be by the vote, or else we wouldn't be, I think is what the, the rest is saying.
And last time, you had a bus, correct?
Last time, we did have a bus, but it was one less day, so we paid for less, one less hotel night, one less lift ticket, so it was about, you know, it was five hundred and forty dollars last time, this is four hundred and fifty. So, it's less money, one more day of lift tickets and hotels, and meals are included this time, which they were not last time. So, it is a much more inclusive trip because parents are voluntary to drive.
How many individuals went last year?
Twenty-three.
And this year, we have less?
Fifteen.
That's too bad.
It sounds like a wonderful trip, doesn't it?
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, I understand that, which is why I looked into it, you know, a couple months ago, so.
If you were to approve a bus, what could you downsize on?
Maybe getting rid of the food, but that's really all we can care about. You know, the lift tickets are a package, the hotel is a package, it's already, you know, reserved, it's a prime weekend, so they're not, you know, it's not something that they'd be willing to let it do only two nights for on Martin Luther King weekend, it's a three-night weekend at almost every ski area on the East Coast.
Where is that, I'm sorry to be so detailed.
It's okay.
Where would that, where would that bring the numbers, like how much more is a person would be if you take away the meals?
At best, at best, the meals are fifty bucks. It's, you know, a couple breakfasts and a couple buffet-style dinners.
And the kids would still need to eat.
Right.
So, really, they still would be hated for the meals at some point, right?
I just will say this, just not to confuse, but maybe to alleviate some of the concerns. The first insurer is going to be the automobile insurance staff, so that will be the first insurer. Then it will be probably the student rider, and then it would be the public. So, there's three levels, you know, and they're always going to, you know, it's always going to be the first provider, it's going to be the first insurance, it's going to be on the bus drivers. So, their policy, you know, it would be moved there, and I'm sure they are, it would seem like, like people are saying, "Okay, if I have passengers in my vehicle," I'm sure.
Thirty-five pound yellow bus. Who, this forty-eight, who brought his alley, you know?
No, this is, to go there, it would be a coach.
Coach, like, five hours. Plus, so what are they getting against yellow? Like, they'll send them up on a yellow bus.
People on a bus go up to now, you know, it's like a comforting, I think, you know.
How much is the yellow all right?
They're going to get a yellow bus.
So, how much is a yellow bus? How much is a yellow bus? Thirty-five. Oh, that's bad.
I could get a quote, I would assume it would be less expensive than the coach, but I can't say that unquote with them, because they're probably, a lot will come back and do a backup.
I could do that, rotate. If we take a bus to Boston, which we do annually, it is a yellow bus, leave it eight-thirty, come back at one-thirty, it's nine hundred dollars. And that's just to Boston, one, you know, one trip up and back, so not driving four hours, four and a half hours, coming all the way back and going back up, four and a half hours.
They won't be comfortable, you know, driving a yellow bus. I'd get on a bus, a field trip, and drive to prom, because I might go, I guess, there. Very uncomfortable.
I know, three of the parents driving on the trip, I guess I'd say they're bad little parents, and we have several layers of insurance, so I'm going to say I'm comfortable with it.
I love this club. The children go participate. I just think it's a great opportunity for the kids that are involved, and so appreciative of the laborers, the parents that are involved. Clearly, we're concerned with, you know, financial risk and liability, but more importantly, the safety of the students that are going. You know, it's inclement weather that time of year, it's supposed to be, that's the whole point of the trip, but, you know, that's a long way to go. And so, I think that, you know, the administration has proof of the driver's insurance, and that it's clear on those waiver forms, that they know exactly who the children are being transported with and by, you know, I feel comfortable in waiving the policy for this trip.
Paul?
He's our solicitor.
My stomach, Jack.
He's our school attorney.
Does that gentleman offer an opinion on the school committee voting against violating its policy?
I don't think that's the issue. So, you establish, and you all you know how this committee to exist, the court to exist, so the school committee felt that there was some benefit to the students if you do that. Everything that you do every single day is liability and risk. So, to me, the question always is insurability. Do we have sufficient insurance to cover the kids in the event something happens? Because something's going to happen somewhere along the line anyway. Some kid's going to bring us going there for a ballgame, somebody's going to trip to a football or basketball game, what we do has liability connected to it because of the nature of the kids. So, if the trust is willing to cover us, and apparently, if you vote in a certain way, and if you think that the activity of the kids is valuable, I think you vote, I was correct, we have several layers of insurance to cover. Can't have a low with that sort of. So, with that, so my advice is, if you think it's a value, why don't we vote in favor of it, as long as we make sure we have insurance. But I sound like a school.
That's okay. It's no different than Boy Scouts, Girls' Scouts, it's the same.
Anybody else? Okay. We had a motion here, there's a discussion case. All of us in favor?
Aye.
You know what, I apologize. Here we go. We had, I want to make sure we had the motion with parent chaperones driving, we did, okay. All opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we have the senior high AP literature class travel to JFK library.
So, the same kind of conversation, slightly different.
Now, we have train.
Yeah.
They have concerns.
So, this is a trip that is designed for a specific class. All of the students in the class are, it's open to them. The variance that is being requested, I mean, there's no doubt that it's a fantastic trip. This is to JFK library in Boston. The variance is that we, the request from the individual, he is here also, is to use the MBTA for travel, and the kids would need to get to the station in order for, to take the train into the JFK airport. So, this is not an overnight trip, but because this is clearly a violation of what we have in our policy, then the only way to have the trip approved is to approve the waiver. And again, the protection is, it's a one-time waiver, but the policy is still in existence. What we don't want to do is just open up the doors for everybody in the world to arrange for variances, and it never comes through the committee for overview of the legitimacy of the request. So, that's why we asked Brent to come, maybe talk a little bit about the trip and what you've arranged in terms of transportation, particularly to the train station.
Sure, yeah. Because of the size of the class, the bus was, seemed wasteful and cost prohibitive, so I thought was to take the commuter rail to Boston, and the JFK library is directly accessible from the red line. So, in order to get there, we would need to catch a seven forty-five train out of Wickford Junction, and my request was to parents to bring their students, their children directly to the train station. So, we'd be coming back on a three-thirty train and arriving back in Wickford at 5:00 PM, and so parents would have to pick their kids up there.
That's my question, how would they have the train station?
And that's why Brent asked, why didn't you?
I polled the parents involved and asked if they'd be willing to drop the kids off and pick them up when they were on.
Eight students, and you would be the only adoptive of them?
That's right.
Okay, and the motion, if someone's made a motion that exists on a general, like, variant.
I'll make the motion to approve the senior high AP literature class travel to JFK library via the MBTA travel variance request.
Second.
Further discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries.
Thank you.
That's fair.
We have the two thousand sixteen seventeen school committee presentation scheduled.
This is the, the schedule of presentations by the schools. What's different about this, first of all, the budget items are already part of that budget timeline that was adopted at a previous meeting. The only thing that is added to this particular memo are the presentations of the schools. Because we've now, we're really going to change to an educational meeting and a business meeting, these presentations will fall on the educational meeting schedule, and therefore, we're going to double up. So, the elementary schools will present on the same night, and this year, they've opted to use MetCaf, what we talked about, this kind of alternating from year to year, so that we had a chance to visit every school. The junior and senior high school, it makes sense that they would go together, because we have school committee meetings in their building in DRA, and they would be here. And then Lyman has always presented with a end-of-the-year presentation, but this year, we're going to conduct that meeting at Lyman, and that was a request of the school committee the last time around. See, Robin keeps track of these things for Lyman. So, that's, that's the presentation schedule. Really, the only thing that's different is that junior and senior will go on the same night, WAWA and Met will go on the same night, and those are educational meeting evenings.
Any questions?
The referendum's what, April tenth?
The twelfth is Wednesday. Okay, so we'll be, traditionally, we meet here after that in cases, so we'll be here. That's just.
Yeah, this is.
Talking about that, it's the educational person, maybe that should be budgetary, or in case we're going to have a tough year. We can always speak to judges if we need to, or have a special meeting on a different day when we need to.
Any others?
Kevin. I move to approve the two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen school committee presentation schedule.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Most okay. Okay. We have policy seventy-six oh two, current rule, early enrollment amendment.
Okay, so policy seventy-six oh two was originally, the major adjustment was made in two thousand and fifteen, and that was a requirement based on some new programs that were available in the state and concurrent dual enrollment. So, our policy at the time was consistent with the guidelines, the guidance that was outlined. What has happened in the meantime is there was a challenge to the Department of Ed, and that, that challenge resulted in a minor change in terms of financial responsibility. Our original policy said that all, all costs associated with the early college rule and concurrent enrollment courses would be the responsibility of the student, and that includes transportation. That remains true, except that the challenge, so this is a hearing that was conducted at RIDE, and the ruling that came out was, if the course is being used to substitute for a required course for graduation, then the school remains responsible for the cost of textbooks. So, the only adjustment is in the financial responsibility paragraph, and it just specifies that exception based on the ruling, the ruling that was posted based on the hearing at RIDE, I don't remember when that hearing was, but it was.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion to approve policy seventy-six oh two to concurrent dual, early enrollment as amended.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Okay, we have the two thousand seventeen high school program studies.
Program of studies, I believe, was included in the packet, yes. The, in addition, Mr. Anthony included for us, he sent us an email, and I said that I just got the email and included as a way for you to interpret the highlights. So, the only changes in the program of study are represented by highlights. Anything highlighted in red is new, a new addition or deletion. Anything highlighted in green is modified from the previous version, and anything with light gray is a course designated not to run next year. So, these are courses that are approved, we can run them, but I know, for example, in the history department, there are a number of electives, and they have a plan for how to rotate the offerings. You know, like, one year, they may have a couple of courses that are running, and then the following year, a couple of different courses that are running, and that's so that you don't have a number of classes where six or seven kids sign up and a course doesn't run. We're kind of trying to spread it out and help to make sure that there's enough enrollment for various course opportunities to run. Some of the changes are based on the school committee approval of new courses, so they would be included in here. And then there are some courses that have been recommended, but if they have not come forward to the school committee yet, then they will be deleted from, you know, if they, if they never come forward, or if they don't get approved by the school committee, then they will be deleted from the program of study. So, there are things out there, like a new AP course for biology, there's questions, there are some things that we need to work through before that proposal gets to the stage of the school committee review adoption. There is another science elective that's out there, there is a technology. There is a technology elective that's out there. Those are the only three I have right there, correct? Yes. The service learning class was approved by the school committee, so that is in here. I believe those three courses that I described are in here as well. But they would be taken out if the vote is not in their favor.
Well, could I make a suggestion? Can you please not do it red and green? It's so hard to read.
Get a lighter red.
Oh, yeah. Or a lighter red and a lighter green.
They're planning on running AP Biology to include this from school to review.
So we don't, we currently don't have AP Biology. There is a, there's a request that's out there. But, so the process involves people by need and the curriculum director and principal. There are some questions that we have. So we're working through that. And hopefully, once that gets resolved, we'll sign off on it. The next phase, we can bring it to the school committee for approval because it is a new course.
How do other kids have a problem?
Yeah, we don't, we do not have a problem with running another AP opportunity. Our questions really are around how, what year it's offered. And if all of our AP courses are offered in, for example, the junior year, well, that presents a problem because you can only take so many courses for, because the APs are one and a half credits. And so where the question is, does, what is the, what is the correct placement of to be significantly important for us as we work through the budget process? That's why we're trying to get this done as quickly as possible. So the caveat is, the only courses that can be included in the program of studies are courses that have prior school committee approval. There are three that are in here that either need to be pulled or left in once the school committee approves the course. That's, that's the only change or the only difference. So you can approve it, that caveat.
Will those three say ten days before we approve in the program of studies right now?
Yes.
So the motion could say, ask presented, to approve the 2017 high school program. Just ask presented, if they say.
Yeah, so we're gonna find that, so right in the program of studies, those, those courses say, and it's going to be approved. So it, it kind of indicates it right there as well. And if the school committee doesn't approve, then those courses don't run. And they're not part of the PLS.
I'm just, in my mind, even after your explanation, it still seems like the, the cops would not enforce on this one, but.
I think, of course, I don't know if there's like, in three years, that won't do Bioshock and, and we might run the green. So I mean, I guess I would say ask presented, if that's presented, it's going to be on school committee approval. And then I think our.
Yeah, I think it's defined in the way that it's ordered.
So the, the easy part about the program of studies this year is there are no other kinds of changes. Any of the changes are, are really about the courses. In the past, there have been additional kinds of changes that are very significant. I know the designation of courses for honors are changing from honors to non-honors, those kinds of things. Honor roll or GPA calculation stuff. I mean, there were some significant kinds of changes that were referenced in the program of study, studies before. This year, none of those kinds of changes exist. It's really just what are the courses that kids have the opportunity to sign up for? And the process clearly indicated which courses have not officially been officially approved yet. So, I mean, that, that's where we are.
Any other comments? I know where I did this. It was just technical. There was a few science classes. I know that my new science is a little bit more tech. If kids, students have biology in their first semester, they're sophomore year. We did attempt to grade those classes that last time.
Yeah.
So the kids have Chris, which was, I know there were a few science classes. I don't know, I think it was one of the science classes. It just, in that direction. Yeah, I do know there are children who technically are in some of the classes. So it's happening, just not in the yet type. That's all.
Marie, can you have that conversation with Chris? Just so that I know that it's being followed, so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So those courses that are designated as appendix school committee approval, will be pursued as aggressively as you want.
And I just want to be clear, some of the questions that we have, it may not result in them coming to us right away. Because some of the, some of the questions, the only reason that we're even talking about it is because we saw them highlighted in the program of studies. But some of our questions for these courses, as well as several others that we've reviewed in past years, that eventually made their way to the school committee, are about the curriculum. So if the curriculum is not written, it's, that's a, that could be an issue.
Definitely.
If we've not, right. So if there's, if there's a question about do we need to buy a whole series of books? Or are the resources going to be online resources that we have free access to? Well, the financial implications are pretty important for us in order for us to budget appropriately. So sometimes the questions are, are things that we really need an answer to before we can even make a recommendation to move forward to school committee. So in some cases, and in the past, this has been the case as well, those conversations take more than one cycle because of the, we just don't have enough information. That doesn't mean that we won't continue to pursue, but they just may not, the timeline may not allow for us to run those courses in the next year.
But that goes to these concerns as well, as much as if you have a booklet that's being disseminated to students and parents, and they're thinking that these are offerings and we don't even know the budgetary considerations yet, hasn't gone through the whole process yet. How, how far ahead of that should we be making this kind of adoption?
So we suspect that if we, if the course goes through the process at our level and we approve it, that we've never really seen the school committee approve another opportunity. But we, we probably will be making some decisions in the next, between now and the next meeting because we've already started to have some conversations. So will the proposals be ready for the next meeting? Or is this something that the timeline just will not allow it to be ready for the next year? In the meantime, the courses, so the booklet is, needs to still be put together. What, what particular things need to be adjusted? We have to fix all the highlights and cross outs. Everything needs to be put together. And he, he could just hold off on that until we make a decision of which of the three outstanding courses are coming forward for approval.
I, I think I understand, you know, I have no problem with classes in general. But if we haven't gotten so far as to have the details of those classes, I don't feel that they should be in that offering tradition.
I, I totally understand. I, I think they're not offered because they haven't been approved.
We can approve the Bioshock 3.3, yeah, of course. That's what we're comfortable with. I mean, then everything with the courses, because NET has all four of the studies.
You can do that as well. I mean, it's the same idea. You're approving everything else and then in the future, so if any of those courses come forward and get approved, then you can make a motion to approve those courses and include them as an addition to the program of studies.
And rather than that, add a lot of program of studies to a, you know, a wish list of what we wish we could offer, you know, even if it's just.
But I, I still don't think, I, I think that strategy is fine. But I think, I'm, I'm sure I wasn't clear. I do not believe that this would have been published with.
Paged.
Yeah. Any of the indication that says pending. Like this would be published once those decisions were made. So maybe the strategy would have been just not even to include them at all. But now you have an idea of what's out there. We have new course requests every single year. And you've always had something that's come to you for approval, which the school committee, regardless of its makeup, has never denied yet that I've, that I've been here. So, yeah, that's completely fine. I mean, it accomplishes the sample. So you can approve it minus the courses that haven't been officially approved. And then the, when those courses come to you, you can make a motion to approve those courses. And if they do get approved, the motion could say include them in the, as an addition to the program of studies, which is completely fine.
Yeah.
When does this have to actually be published? Is this given to the students and parents for next year's?
Yeah, last year, we didn't publish it until late. And we didn't actually finish the high school schedule until late. And we had a little bit of, we had a little bit of flexibility last year. We do not have that level of flexibility. We need some answers this year because the budget is going to be a lot more challenging. So what I, what I did with Chris was to say to him, we need to get the program of studies in as quickly as possible because we need to be ready to go with the selection process as early as possible. That way, we get enrollment, whereas we can be working. We can be working on how many anticipated sections and what is the staffing requirement of the high school because we are going to need to make some reductions. It's going to be tight. So that's the reason why it's even here in December. Otherwise, we would wait until after the holiday.
So right now, we're just confirming that it's not anticipated to be printed just yet until, I heard you earlier, it probably wouldn't be printed until after we already approved.
Well, it doesn't get printed in booklet form. It gets posted.
But I mean, well, posted, frankly. Sorry, wrong terminology. But it wouldn't be officially done until approximately after we might approve those three courses anyway. We're just saying that we agree with this listing, but it might not be officially posted until after we approve the other courses anyway. Can I follow that, Frank?
Kind of.
And when will, when will students start signing up for next year's courses?
Can I, can I? For those of you who don't have kids in the school, just so you know, the guidance office, when the kids pick their courses, the parents don't accept us. The courses are actually uploaded on the computer. So if you're in grade 10, you, you go to a certain tab and you pull it and it shows all the courses that you collect or that you tap. The teachers put in what courses, your core courses, that you're going to be, we recommend you for, whether they be CP or honors. Those are automatically inputted into your schedule, student schedule. And the kids get to pick their electives. So there, so they can see this book, unless they go to our website. And if it's on our website, it's there. How I, I can.
So all of that work to get the tabs ready and everything set up for the kids to select can be done in advance, once the program of studies is approved. So there's a lot that can be done before this goes on the website, officially on the website. But I think at this point in time, because those new courses, which maybe it's premature that it's not on the agenda for us to talk about, they just happen to be listed in here as a, as a placeholder for Chris. But they, if they weren't even on this list, then none of this discussion would have happened, right? Because the courses are here, there's no changes. I think the, the strategy would be it's completely ready for approval. And then if new courses get added, we can just add the new courses and add them to the, it's not printed, it's just online. It's as easy as just cutting and pasting the course online and making sure that that becomes part of the dropdown menu for the particular grade levels where the courses were.
I don't need to bother that because I agree that approving it as it's just, can't be much.
It is nice to know as a school member anyway, well, no, look, well, to add it to our curriculum. So I enjoy seeing good classes in this high school choice of these. I'm excited about it. So I think it's, I mean, it's a good way to educate us and our professors to, oh, I mean, for the next four years. So I like the number, it's just a matter of how we, so. Okay, so we're gonna, we're looking at the high school program studies to approve that. And then as part of the motion, I think I want to make the motion at the end of it, omitting those courses not being priced for the benefit of our task. Diane, can you read the motion on the, to approve 2017-2018 high school program of studies, many of the three are approved by the school courses? Wait a second.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, we have this business, we have Policy 9710, student supervision before and after school hours, second meeting adoption.
This meeting, this particular policy was presented at the last meeting. There was some conversation about the language in that last sentence under section four. So what you see in red has been crossed off. And I think it does actually clarify the meaning of that sentence. That's the only change from the last correction.
Any questions?
I'll make the motion to adopt Policy 9710, student supervision before and after school hours.
Second. Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we reserve now for project.
So I included a enclosure for the school committee for the capital, which are a project that they did. We're winding down on two projects that were scheduled for 2016, but actually were started and will be completed in 2017. The, the Lyman playground is about 98% complete. Now, again, some improvement is actually going to be on site tomorrow. They need to install some fabric in the fencing. And then there's one more component that they have to clear, which is the gate for the, that acts as a barrier for traffic coming in that, adjacent to the playground. The rain barrel in the verderma has been installed. And anybody who's been over there is really, you've got to be impressed. We do have the stencils. Steve Bailey and his team have that, so those will be put on in the springtime. It would really be neat. I know Mrs. Porcy, he was over there. And it would be kind of a nice thing if we, during the Lyman, if you look a little red and cutting ceremony over here. Because this, this particular project got very high regard from the Department of Education, Joe Diszolba, and the Office of Little School Construction there. So it'd be good for the district to get all the sure acclimates for that. The junior, senior high school wall loan generators, everything is, the site preparation's all completed, the ballots are in place, the fencing is actually installed over at the wall loan. They're actually going to drop that, that generator right over there. I'm meeting tomorrow, there's a meeting tomorrow with the, with commercial electric. My understanding is that they are either, they have all the equipment in hand, so the generators in the transfer switch, or they'll be in this week. And we're really looking at tomorrow's meeting coordinating when they can get on during the winter break or the holiday break, or the winter break, the holiday break, and then getting them to coordinate with national break. I can, not a concern, but I need to have de-escalation on the entire year on what it means when we cut out the building, as far as the technology and the systems, the life safety. They did say that it could supply us with, with smaller generators just to keep the life safety, which would be the water and the, and the emergency stop going. But I'm more interested in bringing down the complete network and then bringing that back up. That I just need to hear. I'm confident it will, but again. I'm confident it will, but again, it's appropriate anxiety that we all have, right? The next, so the next project, if you recall the five-year plan that we had. And the next project that is up, which would start June 30th or July 1, 2017, would be the HVAC units for this building. And I actually got to go on the roof, which was pretty cool. Check out the HVAC units up there with Mr. Bailey and Paul Rippey from EME System. Paul has done extensive work in Rhode Island. He worked for Cumberland in Pawtucket. He just came out of North Smithfield in the T-Gaze and did work in Crown. Very, very, just a great guy to talk to, very knowledgeable and had a real good way about him. But again, appropriate anxiety, I get. We could all go up there and look at rooftop units. And then somehow the rooms get cooled and heated. It's been there, there, that's my concern. And for those who are aware of our little study episode that we had yesterday, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Because we've all been there, where we've tried to repair something and then the next thing you know, you're chasing pipe around the house or chasing something along the moor of your car. You're like, oh, it's a generator, not the oven. It's a sparkler. I mean, if they have those anymore. But the point is, is that for the school committee, we really need to know, what are we getting into here? On the surface, we're looking at $869,000. That's just what we know from the architect and from the engineers' first pass at it. And those were estimates, but I have a sense that that could be deeper. That is really included here because it's going to play a bigger part in our budget discussion. As cash flows came, we're not going to have a lot of cash flow going into next year. So as an alternate, I'm starting to look at some of the other projects that were in the out years. And two that are pretty significant in recurring are the intercom systems at both Medcat and at the junior senior high school. And the superintendent directed, myself, Jeremy, to the tech director, Steve Bailey, the facilities director, to pursue a conversation in his office. It's a pretty slick system. For both buildings, you're looking at, this is just material. $130,000 plus $56,000, so $200,000 for materials, which is a complete overhaul of the systems in both schools. Then maybe you're figuring to add another, you know, $100,000 to that for labor and install. Because a lot of the stuff is, it's not like the overwaves with pulling a lot of wires and a lot of wiring stuff going on. The budget for these two systems was $215,000 a piece. So this is a significant cost savings. But again, it's, so it's an option instead of the HVAC system. Mr. Bailey, if he was here, he would relate to you as he has to the superintendent, myself, that he is, he can manage to get through with the HVAC. We can continue to deal with that as we go along. That is, if we're looking at an $800,000 plus spend, maybe we'll get other priorities. And I really think as this whole thing comes to a better focus during the budget process, there is some other discussion about where do we really want to go with capital projects? There's always in the all-day referendums, I ask for capital, capital funding for reserve projects as a separate topic. In 2018, we made our last bond payment on the refund bond that we had. So there's an opportunity maybe to look at, you know, post 2018. Next year at this time, maybe doing a bond of some sort, maybe we will. But again, a few laboring points, which was really kind of, I think we had to elevate the conversation to the cost of the projects that we're looking at, how our finances have changed a little bit based on changing that we have in hand now. And then just to note, you know, we are... And I think, and then just to finish, we've engaged in it to really get a better cost of what that HVAC project is because I'm thinking it's north of that $800,000.
Are there some things that we shouldn't address anywhere regardless?
That's what Steve is referring to. He says he can move along and keep them up and running. So the big things, the two big things are the heat and the cold. You know, the cooling in the summer and the heat in winter. And the fixes on those are running the, you know, anywhere from, I'd say, $1,500 to $5,000 range, $5,000 being the high end. But typically, they're in the $15,000 to $25,000 range. And they're not super frequent. So given that, but this is the point, this is why this came before. No units have been up there 25 years. EDS, so you guys must be getting this up right, because these are 20-year units all the way. So you've got five bonus years, haven't you? I think that's a tribute to the work that the meeting has gone through. But it's got to be a recognition that that fit with is going to come. We play something here. And so we're going to have to make that step at some point. I just don't think it's, we need to have much more in terms of discussion, particularly as we move through the process.
Well, I understand that, but I mean, are there units up there that are worse and are there units that we should address anyhow? Maybe there's, maybe, maybe there's 10 units up there, I don't know. Maybe eight of them will last a few more years with routine maintenance. Maybe there's two up there that, you know, they're going to die. And when they die, they're dying. You know, are there two up there that we ought to address? And the upside to that is that we get them on our own side?
The, correct. And I know some of your backgrounds, so I know you're familiar with it. It's really, the eight of the rooftop units, they're all functioning. What's killing us really is the heat and units. So we're heat, we're cool. So they're working up there, we get those running. So right now, for instance, there was a time when there were rooms that were computer rooms. So they didn't need heat because one of them was being cooled because they were packed with those old computers. Now they're classrooms, but the heat stopped working, you know, 20 years ago. And now we need to get the heat going again. So you're in, you're answering a question. The remedy on the rooftop unit is those five. It's the coils in the amulets that we're, that are on there.
So maybe we should address those anyway, address the rooftop units.
And that's what we're struggling with right now. And Steve feels he can make that work, but we can have that discussion later.
We should probably have a little bit of ease.
Yeah, I think Paul issues his report.
Thank you for...
Thank you.
Why are you wearing that? Some of you behind me, look at your face. Some of you not so... Just going to take a minute to tell you a little bit about something in my law firm. This call, really happy to be here. The committee, wonderful, professional community, nicely, very few problems we ever have with the district. I suppose some of the districts in the state have a lot of problems and regrets. You know, I should attribute to the school committee and the way you thought it sells. And it will be proper. And that's really nice to see. Volker, Chair, Amy, your superintendent is very well regarded across the state. And I can tell you that because our office represents the Superintendent's Association. We all do, we do work for it, and the School Committee Association represent the Business Offices Association statewide. We represent, I know 65% of school committees across the state. Six of us, I think, there are six of us in our office that do this kind of work, all the time. So this is Wednesday, this is Thursday, this week. So we've been to a lot of school committees, as my office has to, when we get to see a lot of school committees. And you guys have just got a certification, so hopefully you can keep that up. That's one of the reasons why I'm very important. Could I ask how many people went to the School Committee 101? Being a couple of weeks, a couple of weeks, try not to be redundant. And maybe they have a kind of presentation for you today. Well, what I did do to make sure you all got the proper copies is I gave you some handles. I gave you a handle that Erin and Carol and I presented at that school committee 101 meeting. Because I noticed that when the association passed it out, some pages were missing somewhere. So this is a complete copy for you, if you want to get. Additionally, there's a small pamphlet for law enforcement committees of the public act that public times in school committee meetings. These are topics that are all prevalued. So this is a guidance that we call, we just call it the GANs, so FAQs that we see. There were probably a couple of them. Additionally, we provide you with three statutes, which we think are very important. It's the enabling statute for super independence. It's the enabling statute for school committees. And it's the rule of management that you guys passed. So I was very happy to see that you do that. We encourage all our school committees, we're going to talk about it a little bit, to pass that every year for every organization. Because the focus issue on those guidance posts that the school committee has a business to do, the general assembly, especially in Omaha, as part of your job. And you notice my answer to Paul's question, I was emphatic about it. We were the general assembly that you chose. And that's a lot of what I want to talk about today too. So I wanted to start off, some of this stuff might be a little redundant. I apologize for that. But hopefully saying this stuff is very helpful to all of you. If you have questions along the way, I'm happy to answer those questions. Part of what we're going to talk about is the law. Part of it, we're going to talk about is advice. I think I'm in a good position to give you advice. I told you because I've been to a lot of school committees. I've seen the good, the bad, see the ugly. Hopefully this stuff doesn't affect your regional district here. Sometimes it happens, but good committees even work through that. They get to the end and they get to the results, which a positive view will be able to do. But given all the experiences that we collected, we had in our office, a lot of what we try to give in our presentations is a little bit of wisdom too. So take it to the extent you think it's valuable. To the extent you don't, you reject it, that's okay with us. It's just information that we have on the way. So first point is congratulations because some of you won. And you see, I think that that's wonderful. You're going to find that it's probably the most fulfilling job, any profitable job in municipal government, because you have the ability to affect so many lives, especially so many young ones. And I think people on councils, town councils, very often think that they're at the top of the pecking order. And I've heard a lot of town council people tell the school committee people, your office is right above dog catching, what it goes to be. But they don't understand the real social hierarchy, which is the impact that you have on students' lives and parents' lives all the time. And through policy, you can make long-term decisions that benefit people. So I think it's wonderful that you basically volunteer for these kinds of positions. I wish I had the time to donate, to do the work that you do. Because you're going to see, especially with the new members, as you get deeper and deeper into your position, there's still deeper that you can go. And there's a lot more work that you can do. This could basically become your full-time job. The other thing that's a lot of fun for you is you develop a real understanding of the educational community and what that means. And you become experts in that area. There are not that many people in the state that can say that. And there are a ton of people in the state that have an opinion on the direction that education can go. So your opinion, after you've been on the committee for a while, is very valuable to the community statewide and all the way. So you should express that because you're going to learn a lot as a new school committee member. So congratulations, it's a wonderful thing that you've done. However, as Albert Einstein said, you have to learn the rules of the game. And then you have to play the game better than anyone else to succeed. This committee has a history of doing that. But some of what I want to talk about is what the rules of the game are. So you'll have an opportunity not to be frustrated by things that happen around you when you feel constricted. And if you understand the rules, it's easier to get to your goal zone. So, this is a comment that I just made. The most important takeaway from this presentation for me is answering the question, how is my position defined? So the General Assembly is the school committee for the state of Rhode Island based on Rhode Island Constitution and a number of Supreme Court decisions. And we always have to remember that. I was with a representative, and he made reference to that. A representative of the General Assembly at a meeting on Monday. And he said, a lot of people forget, we're the school committee. And he was right, because the General Assembly does make rules. It does look like sometimes they're micromanaging, but they're actually the school committee. So they have a prerogative to give you some of their power or take some of that power away. And they do it through statutes, specific legislation, general legislation. They pass town charters. They pass the enabling legislation for your regional committee to actually exist. So whatever power you had comes from the General Assembly. Keep in mind that they can change that at any time. That sometimes makes people crazy, especially in the context of what we know as unfunded mandates. When the General Assembly passes a new law, they require you to get something else and find a way in your budget to accommodate that. It's extremely frustrating. And it is, it is frustrating position to be in. Because many times you're looking at your town councils in terms of the money. You have either the federal government or you have the General Assembly giving you a new set of rules to live by. And it's difficult, but it's up to you to figure that out, sort that out. And by and large, you all do. Another very important issue is confidentiality to new school committee members. So there's a lot of information that you're going to be privy to now that you weren't before. And one of the biggest changes, I think, for a new school committee person is essentially now you're on the inside as opposed to the outside. So when you're on the outside of the organization, you see things happen and you come to certain conclusions why they happen. But you often don't have all the facts behind it. So you don't know why the school committee acted the way they did. You don't know why parents acted the way they did generally. You don't know why the superintendent acted the way he did, especially when they come out of an executive session and they vote on an issue. But now, as you sit on the school committee, you're going to be sitting on those executive sessions and you're going to be privy to a lot of information. Well, there are a number of areas that make all this information confidential that you have to be very careful about. So the rule that I have is what happens in executive session states in executive session. You talk among yourselves at that meeting. You don't even talk among yourselves about those issues outside that meeting. Why? Some of the matters are personnel-related. Some of the matters are student matters. Some of the matters will come under the Americans with Disabilities Act. Some will come under FERPA, which makes school records that deal with students educational records, and they're therefore confidential. Sometimes you'll be discussing or talking about medical issues that deal with either students or your employees. Sometimes the issue's in negotiations. Sometimes the issue is purely legal advice that you might get from me or another one of my partners. Sometimes you talk about district liability in terms of a case that might be pending against the district or the district intends to sue anyone. And sometimes, and only tangentially related, special education matters come before you. All those under the law are considered to be confidential. And if you disclose that information, different things can happen, depending on the statute of question. For instance, if someone comes before you, a parent, and they need to discuss... For instance, if someone comes before you, a parent, and they need to discuss in executive session a diagnosis of their child, for some reason, with respect to a request that they've made, and there's a hearing regarding that. Under Rhode Island law, the release, unauthorized release of medical information is a felony, which means you can go to jail for a year or more if that's done. If there is a release of PII, which is Personally Identifiable Information, Rhode Island has a statute that compels you to give notice to anybody who released that information to the, excuse me, for anybody who released the information to anybody who owned that PII, and you're subject to statutory sanctions if you don't. So if you talk about what happens in executive session or information that you get confidential, the district could be sued as a result of your statement, you get pulled into court, or on occasion, you could get sued personally, and on those occasions, neither the trust nor the district represents you, because you acted outside your authorities, you even have the higher own attorney to represent you. So the potential liability is great for you and the district. When you sit on the school board, very often what you said is, you say is considered to be a statement or admission of the school board. So that could be used against the school committee, the school community, the school district in a court, or if you're called, to testify something. And attorneys like me do that all the time, we subpoena everybody we can to win our cases, and you'll be leveraged that way for what you're saying publicly. So you have to be really, really careful about that. For instance, today, a lot of people tweet, as we know the president-elect does, a lot of people use Facebook, and that's fine, but a lot of people tend to expose confidential information about themselves on Facebook. If you do that, and it's district confidential information, you've now created a record of that, that attorneys or judges are going to be able to look at. So you have to be very circumspect now that you're on the school committee, when you use those social media tools, as to what you put on, you really have to be thoughtful about that. So I can't say, "Don't use social media," but I can say, "Be thoughtful, be really careful when you use social media," because now the whole world can see that, it could be used against you or the school district at some point in time. So since you won, you're invited to the school committee party, but it's important to know that you're not the only people invited to that party. The General Assembly has invited a lot of groups to that party. So besides school committees and superintendents by statute, they've also invited RIDE, they've invited the Department of Health, under federal law, the Department of Education, the Department of Justice, sometimes OSHA, all these people are invited to your party, and you have to deal with all of them, because they all have statutes, authorities, abilities, that sometime conflict with yours or your mission and your goal, and part of your job is to find a way to homogenize all those together, and still be an effective school committee, and get to where you want to go. It's not necessarily an easy path, but if you approach it in a thoughtful manner, as it channels that could be cocky, you can get there, and you can get to where you want to be. But keep in mind, you are not the be-all and end-all in any decision on educational matter. Virtually every single decision that you make can be appealed by someone to ride, and ultimately, the commissioner makes a final decision, unless it ends up in the Superior Court. So you're not the end, very often you're the beginning of a process, and you're compelled by state and federal law to deal with other stakeholders. Your views then get homogenized with theirs. So understand that as a rule as you operate. A lot of times, the federal government or the state will pass laws, they require you to pass policies. Paul and I talked about that a minute, why should I vote for that? And I said, "Well, the General Assembly told you to." That's a small example of the things that the state and the federal government require you to do, whether you like it or not, require to uphold laws based on your role. So as long as you sit there and you want to be a school committee person, you're obliged to do certain things that might be distasteful to you in certain ways, but you have to do it, and I've seen other committees do it too. This next segment is a little bit tongue-in-cheek. So I've mentioned to you that I've seen, I've been to a lot of different kinds of school committees, and I've seen the constitution of a lot of school committees, and a lot of personalities. We know basically there are five-way personality traits, but we've observed in my office a number of different personality traits in school committee people. So just consider whether or not you're one of these, be thoughtful, keep in mind, I'm saying it in tongue-in-cheek manner, but there also is quite a bit of truth to it. So these are the kind of personalities we've seen, and you just have to be careful. The first one is what we call the super superintendent complex. So a lot of school committee members are so anxious to do something positive, that they start to view themselves not to be a member of the school committee, but a superintendent. And we know that based on state laws, the superintendent's job, and only his job, to run the district as a CEO. You can't put yourself in the position where you start to do his job, unless you have a superintendent certificate, and as one superintendent told the mayor, "If you want the job, come put your butt in my seat, make the decisions." So unless you can put yourself in that position, you don't have the right to act as the superintendent. Through policy, you can certainly give the superintendent direction on how to act, but I always know my school committees, Sergeant, if you don't like your superintendent, fire him, get another superintendent. But once a superintendent is in a position, you have to let him or her do their job. That's why I put in. State statute provides in particular that you're required to work with committee members to establish effective policies and to delegate authority for administration to the superintendent. State statute that I passed out to you also says that the superintendent is solely responsible for the personnel function. I suspect that that's not a problem in this district, but we do have a number of districts where school committee people like to make personnel decisions with the superintendent. A very bad way to go. You're also required by state laws to act as a majority, not on an individual basis, and we're going to talk a little bit about, a little more about that in a little while. You're required to interact with the superintendent, and technically, under the code that you just passed, only with the superintendent. Now, I know very often, school committee people develop relationships with your business manager, sometimes you call and talk to your business manager, the chair does that, or other people, sometimes you sit in the superintendent, and you have questions about correctly. The superintendent should always know what's going on, and you should always go to the superintendent, and do that so he knows what's going on with his people, that's very important. But you're prohibited from engaging in the administrative process by state law specifically, so be careful of that. Also, keep in mind that the committee acts through its votes, and it directs the superintendent and legal counsel to take actions, usually based on the superintendent's recommendation. So you see, for all these reasons, the superintendent becomes the pivotal person in any district. He'll make recommendations to you, often he'll present policies to you if you have consideration, you can decide whether to accept them or reject them or not, but very often, he's kind of the prime mover, just as the president is of the United States. It's a budget to Congress, submits the names of employees to Congress, or the Senate for advice and consent. Superintendent works in much the same way, you have to respect that role. The second, and this is my favorite, the uninformed agent of change. And this happens frequently, you see by the cartoon, oh no, it's the angel of death, no, I've changed my name, I'm to the agent of change. I see this a lot by people who run the first time, and they have a preconceived set of ideas from what they've seen on the outside, and they're determined to make a change. A lot of school committee people run because they want to get rid of someone, as opposed to effect positive change, because they've seen decisions, and they don't understand why decisions were made, because they didn't have the data that the people who made those decisions relied on, truly what it comes down to. So state law kind of addresses this. Before you propose change, you're required by statute to fully understand the reason things are done. State law sixteen dash two dash nine point one says that you can only act on legislative and policymaking matters after examining pertinent facts and considering the superintendents' recommendations. You don't have to go along with this recommendation, he's not your chair, you all have independent minds, and you all have constituencies that you want to speak to, that's all fine. But the mandate from the General Assembly, and it makes sense, is before you push for a change, make sure you've taken the time to examine all the facts by both sides. Take a fair reading of the data that's put in front of you, and then make a decision. And whatever your heart tells you, well, I'm sure it's going to be fine, and if it's not, the voters will take care of that for you ultimately, right? If it's a bad decision. But keep in mind, pay attention to the data. If you need information, part of what the superintendent can do for you is generate reports, give you data, analyze data, they're very good at that in the school district, and I'm sure they'll be happy to do it, to fully inform you. The next, this is actually, we had this problem in my office with one of my partners, a committee appoint. There's no I in team, and there's no team in I. Very often, school committee members want to act on their own, because it's too frustrating to get a majority. But I have to remind you, you're all elected to a committee, you're not all elected to a particular position. So you're required by state law to act as a committee. So what does that mean? That means you have to get a majority of people to follow you in a particular direction. So that means you have to advocate for your cause, and other people have to advocate for their cause, and hopefully you come up, if there's a disagreement, with a fair compromise between the two of you. But if you don't have a majority that's in your corner on any particular issue, your issue is not going to go anywhere. So advocate, talk to people on the school committee, put issues on the agenda, need to advocate to move something forward. Don't get frustrated if you just make a motion or have an idea, not prepared to back it up and to argue persuasively for them. And we saw some of that tonight, you had some nice educational discussions tonight about what you're going to put in your course aesthetic, and you're going to put a good decision. But that's what you need to do, you need to express yourselves, you need to advocate, to convince people to go your way to get something done. The hero response. Sometimes we have school committee members that want to dig in and fix everything, and they think they're the person that can fix it. That tendency that you want to do is find out what the protocol is for you to participate in that, and not just to jump in two feet at a time and start swinging, or start coming up with ideas, because they're not going to go anywhere. You need to figure out what the process is to do that, and plug yourself into the process. Sometimes there's subcommittee assignments, you can ask the chair to put you on. Sometimes it's the opportunity to review an agenda writing in advance, and talk to the chair if you have an issue, and ask, "How can I get more information on something?" But you can't fix anything by yourselves on an individual basis, which it doesn't work in a committee approach. You have to keep that issue in mind. The general laws say that you have to establish and maintain procedural steps for complaints and criticisms of school fears. So statute requires you to have a process to resolve issues. Pay attention to that, don't think that you can fix things on your own, it's very difficult to do that. Process also is, or should never be used, to discourage criticism of dissenting school committee members. So everybody has a viewpoint, they're all equally valid in terms of being heard, and I know your chair is going to make sure that everybody can present criticisms. And going through a process is never intended to discourage that, and I think all chairs, all good chairs know that. So everybody gets to be heard, then you need to move on, if you need to vote, you need to move forward on an issue. Disruption ahead. The disruptor. Very often, we have school committee, new school committee members, that think they need to burn the whole system down, and that's the only way that they're going to get any positive progress. So if you perceive yourself to be a disruptor, and you're new to the committee, a couple of things to keep in mind. I'm not going to say, "Don't disrupt things," if that's your thing, that's fine, but it's never an excuse to operate on a personal level and engage in personal attacks. That really polarizes a committee, the community does not want to see that, they never want to see that, because it makes you look unprofessional. In some cases, I've seen school to way school committee men or women at, and they actually will go out of balance, and they lose a lot of integrity in the community, and it's a shame, because you all put a lot of effort into running, and you think a lot of yourselves, everybody on this committee has to have a healthy ego to put themselves through an election, and to stand up for what you believe. So please act as a professional man, no matter how passionate you are about an issue at your committee meetings, stability is just so important to carrying on, carrying forward this committee. Never, please never attack your employees in public session. So if you have something to say that is a personnel issue, state law allows you to discuss that in executive session, and that's where that conversation should happen. So why? So if you constantly punish your employees, or you disparage your employees because you're upset about some issue, that's going to destroy morale. People who work in school districts do it mostly out of love, not mostly out of money. They, most of them put their hotness solely to their job. The last thing that you want to do is you want to destroy their morale when they come to work, and not do a good and effective job. So there are ways to express criticism, but to do it in an appropriate way. So if someone does something wrong, and you want an issue here in executive session, you work that out with the chair. You don't hurt people in public session. Again, it also makes you look, it hurts your integrity, it makes you look bad, unprofessional. And also, educational professionals, students, and parents, and the taxpayers that you serve really demand the better of you. And I might be preaching to the choir, because I haven't been to one of your meetings in a long time, and all your meetings may be fine, but we see a lot of this, when people tend to be passionate about their issues, they often lay waste everything that's around them, school committee people, employees, anybody in their way. You don't need to do that to get your point across, the public expects all of you to act in a professional manner all the time, so please do that. The concept of working together because you're on a committee. So typically, you have a chair, which you have right here, which you've elected tonight, understand what the role of that chair is, and how she can serve you, because the chair's primary job, I'd say, two primary features of the job, is to act as a liaison between you and the superintendent, and also to run the meeting in a way that serves the interests of the majority of the committee, while allowing the dissenting committee members to have a voice at all times. So understand their job and their responsibility. If you have an issue with the chair, call up the chair and talk to the chair. If there's a way you think a meeting can be improved, things could be more transparent, you owe it to yourself to talk to the chair, you're going to find that your chair's going to be more than willing to do that. So that question, Sean?
Sure.
I was always under the assumption of the Robert's Rule, which I'm not, was that the chairman has no more authority than any other senior member of the committee?
Actually, that's embodied in state law.
Okay. That said, I thought the restrictions are the, those things commonly executed by the chair, normally nothing more than collecting the agenda and running the meeting.
So the statute says that the chair has the authority that you give the chair. So in some districts?
So that's not codified.
Yes, it is.
I dare you to point that out.
You dare me?
Yeah, I do, I do dare you.
Look through the statutes that I gave you.
A section of the law that they're quoting right now, that says that the school committee has the authority to, that's something we can't tell it.
Look through the three statutes that I gave you.
I'd be shocked.
You could be shocked. I'll look through the statutes and you will inform yourself.
Well, why don't you give me the statutes?
I did give you two.
Which section?
Off the top of my head, I don't know, I think I have them, I don't remember which sections.
God, do you have to get this, listen.
So, in a lot, to answer your question, in a lot of districts, often what happens is that over time, and through custom, chairs are delegated a significant amount of authority. It depends on the level of authority that the school committee is comfortable with. So if a committee feels that a chair is exercising too much authority outside the school committee meeting, that's an issue that you can address, and you can pass a policy, or you can amend your bylaws to curtail that. But a lot of times, you'll find that the chair is the lubrication that... But a lot of times, you'll find that the chair is the lubrication that helps you be informed and is a conduit of information with the superintendent. Because you can imagine how difficult it would be if seven people called up the superintendent every day and asked him about an issue, how much work he'd give up. I've seen that in some school committees and I've known superintendents that have been up to midnight targeting every single school committee person because they were, in a sense, they were dysfunctional and they didn't want to trust their chair with something. So the position of a chair often encompasses more than just what you suggested before. And that's the reason for it. But if a majority of you feel uncomfortable about what your chair does, you can control that problem. It's very easy to do. One important thing that school committees frequently don't do is they don't set goals for themselves. So one of the things you can consider doing is what does this school committee want to accomplish over the next year or two years? And have one of your educational meetings and discuss that with guidance from the superintendent. What can you accomplish? If you set goals, you tend to accomplish goals. If you just react to problems, that's all you're doing, your positions. So I strongly suggest that you consider doing that. I also have some advice on budget issues and this, some degree is controversial for those of you that went to the one-on-one session that Mary and I did, she disagreed with a lot of these. So take these as my point of view. You get the last pass on the budget, keep that in mind. So your last vote on that budget is very important. So pay attention to the budget, what it means, make sure it embodies what this school committee wants for this district. It's very important. You have a problem with a 4% cap? So that means, and as Jim mentioned, one of the districts that had a decline gave, at least for the next two years. So if you, if you don't create enough space between where you want to be in your district in terms of dollars and where you are right now and you just look at your budget every single year as what's the minimum amount of money that I'm going to spend and you don't take advantage of the 4% cap or an increase every single year, you're going to doom yourself to a certain level of pseudo-performance and programs that you have. If you follow what I'm saying, you're going to need room in your budget to grow all the time, just natural. So if you don't take advantage of that every single year, you're going to be caught short because you're not going to be able to grow that 4% cap. And given what's happening on a state level in terms of deficits or what they're projecting over the next several years, I think you're going to be arguing before recording that new, but any school district, any education. You look at what the Speaker of the House has committed in terms of taxes, so he wants to reduce taxes over the next three to five years, contacts in particular. What's going to get cut as a result of that? You may find that educational spending is a target, that's an easy target very well because it's a short time. So keep in mind of that, that when you, when you build your budget and you ask for an increase, it's not a bad thing to ask for an increase every year. When you look through your budget, watch out, watch out about eliminating low-gaining fruit. So we can eliminate this program now, there's a certain amount of money connected to it, so let's just cut that out of the budget as best we can. So next year, when you want to institute a different kind of program and you search for funds for that, what are those funds going to be? They'll have disappeared. You're probably not going to be able to get them back. So whenever you cut something, keep in mind how you can keep the money if you have points to spend that money in a subsequent year. So it really takes a lot of planning. You have an excellent business manager and you should always ask him that question. What could this money be used for in the operational budget next year? And why might we need it next year before you cut it in your budget this year? And this is what I've actually gotten into trouble for, I was in front of a new board school committee giving a presentation similar to this and it was for school committee people and people who were going to run to the school committee. And I asked the question, whose job is it to cut the budget really? And in that context, the town council is the one ultimately that cuts the budget and municipality, not so much with you, except you have to look at what the appropriation you get. But the point that I was trying to make is there are people out there that are willing to cut your budget. Your job, based on state statute, is to make sure that all the kids' needs are fulfilled and you're giving them the best education that you can give them with the resources that are made available to you. That's why you were put on the school committee. That's what the General Assembly says your job is. The General Assembly does not say in any statute, and by the way, cut the budget as much as you can every single year. That's other people's job generally. So I'm not saying you don't be a watchdog with the money and make sure it's spent wisely, but I am saying considering, consider, when you look through the budget, don't be in a big rush to cut everything because somebody else will be in that rush to cut it for you. You're not going to be a hero if you permanently degrade your education in the district. That's an important issue I think you need to look at. Also, while you should keep your eye on taxes, the General Assembly really forces you to look at education issues before you look at taxes. So if your students need something or you're compelled to provide a certain kind of service, that becomes your first issue. Money becomes the secondary issue and the challenge for you is to try to figure out how to fund it, not how to make sure the kids go without something that's been required or something that you think is essential for your school district. Working with the superintendent. So as I mentioned before, the superintendent is the CEO of the regional school district. That's really significant. So in any other employer-employee relationship, you don't see a state statute that creates a position of superintendency. You do see that for school districts. The General Assembly, when they created the school system, specifically created certain statutory responsibilities and obligations in the superintendent of schools. So just as you're a creature of the General Assembly, Jim is a creature of the General Assembly too. They could get rid of his position if they want or they could turn it just into an employer-employee relationship if they want, like a police chief, like the Director of Public Safety, like the Head of Public Works. But his position is something completely different than that because it's enabled by a specific statute. He's got a responsibility independent of you to enforce the laws of the state of Rhode Island. So even if you don't like a law that was passed or a policy that you're being required to pass or operate in a certain way in the school district, that law applies to him equally. He's got the duty to carry it out. His penalty is he can get his ticket vote and not be a superintendent anymore. So the damages to him are extreme. He can lose his career. So all superintendents have to be very careful about how they act and react with regard to statutes. So when he tells you that he has a responsibility to do something, one of the questions you want to ask is do you feel that you're mandated to do that? What's the basis of responsibility for that? Why is it important to do it? If it's based on statute, if you disagree with it philosophically, your disagreement loses. It just does because that's how the General Assembly has set up the rules of the game for you. Be careful not to micromanage the superintendent and I see this a lot with mature committees or mature superintendents because you've learned so much, I mean, mature school committee people, you've learned so much and you want to do something with that educational knowledge and very often you're tempted to say, I know a lot about that, I bet I could make that decision. But maybe it's because the superintendent has kind of made it easy and transparent and simple for you. So go beyond that temptation. You want to rely on what your superintendent tells you, really consider his recommendations as you move forward. Understand that your relationship with the superintendent is not simply employer and employee. You both have to respect each other's responsibilities and obligations. That's just so important. If you do that, you understand the realms of what you each have to operate, sometimes independently, but in a Venn diagram of the two positions, a good portion of it overlaps in terms of responsibility and decision-making. So it's in, to a large degree, it becomes shared decision-making at school committees. And that's difficult to do. I have six partners and we had fights all the time, both of sometimes giving people 25 cent raises, what color photocopy machine we should hire, we should get, how much paper we should buy, we had a fight once over pens and the size of pens that we should, crazy stuff. So you've got seven of you guys and coming of one mind to that is difficult. You add an eighth person to that mix and understanding the tensions between the two positions is difficult, it's challenging, but it's intended to be so you come to a good decision.
Can you help Jim? How'd you do it? Right, that's the next one?
Yep.
Okay.
Well, I am Jim's technical advisor.
Is the next one?
Because he's very good at that. Chain of command is a real important issue that you all have to pay attention to. So if a parent calls you up and complains about an issue, what is the first thing you need to tell them? That was a real question. Something happened in a classroom with a teacher and a parent doesn't like the teacher and they call you, what's the first thing that you tell them to do? Yeah, call the principal or go meet with the teacher and see what the issue is and see if you can talk it out. If that doesn't work, you go to the principal. If it doesn't work with the principal, you then need to approach the superintendent. If there's a process in the rulebook, student handbook, or there's another protocol that the school district uses, you can identify that form. Don't call the superintendent's office and file that out.
That's true. A simple policy question, a violation.
No.
It's the law.
No.
It's the law. If that person's, if that person, that person's child is in somehow jeopardy, I disagree.
Well, give me an example.
Teacher molested child.
You're right. In that case, you'd say, please call the police immediately because that's a crime. And you call your superintendent, say it was an allegation of child molestation. That's easy.
Something's amazing.
So we can always find an edge where you can take something to an illogical conclusion in terms of the point that you're trying to make. But if a parent calls up and says, my son's math teacher is not good because my son is getting bad grades, that circumstance is one in which you would encourage the parent not to talk to you because you can't do anything about it, certainly not on an individual basis and the committee really can't do anything about it. You would tell that parent to go try to resolve it with the teacher and then with the principal and then the superintendent. And those are the kind of circumstances that you would do that in. If there was a personality conflict between two employees in the district and one calls you up because they know you and they voted for you, you wouldn't say, oh, I'm going to take your side. You would encourage them to file a complaint. If someone feels that an inappropriate sexual conduct was made, you have a sexual harassment policy, you'd encourage them to go file a complaint and have that properly prosecuted within the school district so they can run a proper investigation and not be involved in it. And the reason is, in many of these cases, where you do become in the district the voice of last resort because appeals are made to you, you cannot, as a school committee member, afford to be tainted. So if you receive information outside a hearing or something that eventually comes to you as a hearing, that then becomes a legal defense against the school committee's decision because you've been tainted. You can't render a fair decision because when you walked into that meeting, you haven't heard the both sides of the story. And that, you will be leveraged and you will be embarrassed, you will be in court and you will have to explain in some other body, either a state or a federal court or a RIDE, why you said something. And something will certainly be taken out of, out of context that you said by a parent or by an employee if the case didn't go their way. So be really careful of that. It's always easy to, if you refer people back to the chain of command, you cannot get into trouble. But there is great jeopardy if you do it any other way, yourself into the district. So we have to be careful of that. With respect to the superintendent, constructive criticism generally works best through an evaluation. And to have an effective evaluation, you have to have goals set up. So you can't criticize the superintendent or any CEO for actions that he or she took unless you set expectations in advance. So one of the things, if you don't do it, is you should sit with your superintendent on an annual or a biannual basis and say, what goals do you have for the district and see if they line up with your goals and have a discussion about that and set them and then measure them. And that becomes an important part of your evaluation system. So everybody knows what to expect and what they need to accomplish.
It's kind of tough though because I've been on the committee, fortunately, eight years, so there's a lot of water under the bridge. Those circumstances were not necessarily as a base to the superintendent, but information is not dissimilar. As an example, maybe there's two email distributions for this, one with you on it and one with you not being. So your picture that, your painting is very rose and I think it's...
I'm going to need a new profile in my presentation.
Sarcastic school committee member.
I'm pretty accused of that by saying...
I appreciate your presentation, but I've been on the receiving end in a much different way. I may not agree with all of them.
Well, when you, when you have issues like that, you bring those issues to the chair or if you need to, you bring those issues before the school committee. I don't have any knowledge of what you're talking about. It may have been past superintendents. But you know, you're newly elected, again, you have a new opportunity to start fresh and serve people and I'm sure you're going to serve them well. Finally, working with union colleagues, which is important. So I find usually there are polar opposites in school committee members. There are some, many that think that unions shouldn't exist and they just gum up the works all the time. And then there are some on the other side, very often there are people who have been involved with unions in the past that are very pro-union, think union is the best thing in the world, reads life into employees and it's wonderful. I take a middle class, obviously, but I negotiate with unions all the time and generally very successfully, sometimes not, but generally very successfully. What's important to remember, I think, is the main responsibility of a union is the interest of its members. Very often that coincides with education, but frequently it does not. They have to advocate for their members. That's what they're created to do. That's what's in their DNA. Don't expect anything else from them. Now, very often, they can be reasonable, but understand at the end, the bottom line is their job is to protect their members. So a lot of times, I don't know if you've had, I don't think you've had any teacher termination cases recently, but unions will very often fight in the most outrageous cases to keep people in court. I've had many cases where they've done that and I've always asked, but majoritively, why are you defending this guy or this woman when you know what they did? We have the evidence. And they said, it's our job. So they very often consider themselves to be something that can be public defenders in a criminal case. Understand that they didn't do that. That shouldn't be a source of frustration. Just understand their job and where they come from and then everything kind of makes sense. Understand also that dealing with employees is different than dealing with a union. A union is a bureaucracy. You're dealing with an institution as opposed to dealing with individual members that have, as employees, as students of your kids, your most valuable resource in the school district. It's a difference when they all get together. And you have to treat them in a different way. So bureaucracies tend to want to exist. They need income to do that in the form of contributions from their employees. They have to serve them, they have to give them benefits all the time. They have to represent their interests first. That's not bad or evil, that's just the way the system is set up and it's fine. If we recognize that, we can negotiate around that and we can deal with it. It's also in the union's interest to encroach in the area of management rights as frequently as possible. It's done on a state level, it's done in the General Assembly, it's done at RIDE, it's done in school districts. It's up to you to say no. And it's pretty easy to say no. When you think something steps on your education or, excuse me, your management rights, your prerogative or the superintendents, you have to say no. So they will ask and ask and ask and unions only acquire the rights that you give them in the universe of events. So they see their universe as their Clark-Bargen agreement. You negotiate that Clark-Bargen agreement. I see the universe as one circle of Clark-Bargen rights... I see the universe as one circle of Clark of bargaining rights, and then another circle of management rights, some of which overlaps the first circle only because you've given some of those rights away. So guard those rights zealously, give them money, but don't give them rights. And that's what I tell my school committees all the time. Because you can't let them control you, you might as well not be a school committee, you've given away your prerogative, your job when you do that. That doesn't mean that you can't work cooperatively with teachers, and you can't have distributive leadership, and you can't have committees with teachers, because they do work there, and they voice their concerns, and they have valid ideas, and that could all be taken in. Do all that without giving away your management prerogative. So be very careful about that. Another thing that I don't think has ever happened in this district, but I've seen it in other districts, is unions very often try to meet with individual committee members to split them and form a wedge, and sometimes they try to meet with the school committee without the superintendent. Recall that, based on state law, that superintendents are responsible for administering the district, not you all. So the employee should go to him, they shouldn't go to you guys. Again, you give power to the unions when you do that, and it's not a positive thing to do. You diminish the CEO's ability to run that district when you do things like that. In another school district, I was hired, a very good school district, I was hired just to negotiate a contract, and this was the second time around, and the first time the union wasn't really happy with the result. Go figure. And the second time, when the school committee announced that they were going to hire me again to negotiate, president of the union, first thing she did is called up the chair, and she said, have a meeting with you, it's a personal issue, I have to talk to you right away. So she said, okay, I'll talk to you. So they met. And the whole conversation was, how can we get rid of Ben? We don't need a professional negotiator, we don't need to do that. And she said, oh, wait a minute, I'm not going to have this conversation. It's over, we're never going to discuss this issue again. The school committee wants to use a negotiator, and that's what we're going to do. So she acted perfectly appropriately in that circumstance. But unions will try to use, because it's to their benefit, any tool that they can to try to split you or diminish your power. Keep that in mind. It's not the message, though, that unions are evil, they're just human bureaucracies. And the last, I promise, the last point is working with the community. It's important when you work with the community to remember the issue of confidentiality. Please, it's going to embarrass you, it could potentially create liability, it always comes back to hurt you. So I know that a lot of you have close contacts with your constituents, that's how you got elected, but you're now in a position where you're going to have to say, I'm sorry, I can't discuss that. And that's going to be hard for people to swallow, because you've had all kinds of conversations with them up to the point where you've gotten elected. You're in a different position now, and you have to respect the position they can render in the district, because you're now on the inside looking out, as opposed to the outside looking in, and there is a big difference. You also have to be, and this is a slippery slope, a lot of school committee members run with the committee because they have kids. And some of those people want to affect positive change because they've seen things happening in schools, they want to contribute their point of view. That's fine. But keep in mind not to advocate for yourself or a self-interest, because your job now is to advocate for the community interest. So something may be beneficial to your kids, that's fine, but when you advocate for something, just be thoughtful about the reason why you're doing it. Because that will also subject you to public criticism. The community expects you to act for them as a whole now, now that you have this position, not for yourself. The last point that I have to mention to you, and this is a difficult one to get arms around, even in a description, and the question that I put there is, is the committee ready for a change? Very often, school committee members want to do something that's good and progressive or lead the district in a particular direction. And one question you should always ask yourself is, how fast should we do it, and is the community ready for what we want to do or what we think is appropriate? It could be something as insignificant as the institution of the new math program in the high school, that parents may not understand at first. You also, you always have to judge, you are clientele, you know, the students and the parents, and you have to ask yourself, when you're going to make a big change in anything, is there a way to sequence it so we don't create a lot of anxiety among parents? How do we create the environment for change so it's acceptable? Because you represent them in their interests, even though you're duty-bound to follow a law in a particular area. So you can move at a pace which is fear that you can let the community catch up to you all the time. Don't be, don't move too faux, too fast. If you want to retain your seats. Unless the law requires you to do otherwise, and that's the caveat. So three concluding points. Keep in mind, you were elected to a committee, not a single position or a single person can act. Always pay attention to process and protocol because they're important, and defines the way that you do things. If you understand process and protocol, you can get things done. If you don't, you can't, and you're going to be extremely frustrated. And the last, which is a friend of mine told me a while ago, there's never the right way to do a wrong thing. And as an attorney, I keep that in mind all the time. Because I always have a client that says, I want to get there, how do we do it? And if it's the wrong place to be under the law, I always say, we can't get there. Even if there's a way to try to get there, you shouldn't want to get there because it's the wrong place to be, it's the wrong thing to do. So even though you can find a legal car maybe to get to someplace, you really have to look at the objective and make sure it's an appropriate objective for the committee. So I promised to talk only about an hour, I think I did that. Anybody having questions besides Paul? I'm kidding.
That's the name of your wall?
Brendan McCuprow, Cashon, Iscongi, O'Neil, McCallis.
All the names.
They're all hot names. We strategically put the Irish guys on the outside to watch the three Italians.
I'm used to that.
But I'm sure you're all going to bring your passion and your energy to this job, and they're going to be just fine. Just remember the rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our positive has adopted five teenagers from the league. I'm going to say we're not going to adopt children, there's more than a million, to get them Christmas gifts. So they've adopted five employees that are here. And I just want to mention, I told her about what they're doing, they sell fun, and they keep our children attached to it. So just like our, our team, I think, to Christmas, I'm sure it's all thanks.
Second session. Motion to adjourn.
I have a comment. We did the committee organization earlier, and I didn't notice in the moment to bring it up, but Cheryl came forward wanting to be a part of the health and wellness school committee, but it says previously we only had two people for that, two designated people for the health and wellness contact.
The health models.
I mean, you can have multiple members who live anywhere.
We don't live together.
We only did one room, discussed it, so I didn't have to dial it back to me.
You live together.
Okay, so Rob, can you maybe do the health models?